Welcome to this Monday, February 26, 2024, meeting of the school committee. This meeting is being recorded and I invite you all to join if you're able to the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forgot the actual words called. So in case that wasn't obvious. First order of business is our consent agenda. There is meeting minutes in the packet, two warrants in the packet, budget transfers as FYI and, I'm sorry, general fund stays as FYI and budget transfers. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Nope.
Okay, and we'll do for a motion.
So moved?
Thank you.
Seconded.
Great, thank you Catherine and Bill, all in favor?
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you in the back here at all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Try to speak up a little bit.
These mics don't amplify though, they're only for YouTube as well, so.
I think.
Yeah.
That was just the consent agenda, which is like our routine approvals. Next up is public comment, so I will speak up. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone. So we do have some interest on Zoom, so we can start in the room and switch off to Zoom. So if anyone's interested in speaking, come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Hi, Helia.
Hi, Kate.
I'm Heather Urban, I'm from the manager at the DabNassett School.
I'm Maggie Carlson, the manager at the Miller School and also a resident of Westford, 23 Edwards Ave.
So as you can see, is most of all the lunch ladies are all here. We're just a little confused on this money being transferred that would like the understanding of the reason behind the proposal to move 150,000 from food service to the custodial salary, to go toward the custodial salary, that this money has taken us over 10 years to accrue. And we just kind of feel like food services needs aren't being taken care of because soon we'll need data equip- equipment, we'll need to hire new people because of the lunches are going up and we're going into contracts negotiations this year too. We'd like that money for us, for salaries, for increases. So we're just a little confused on the moving of the money, of my, of our money.
So.
The food service money.
I didn't say this earlier, but public comment, we don't usually respond directly to questions. It won't come up, that this topic will come up later in the agenda during the budget discussion. But it's not our practice, I know it feels unsatisfying, but it's not our practice to like do a dialogue right now.
Okay.
Thank you, we did receive your emails.
So if I may, Senator, if now is not the opportunity to have questions answered, may I share just from an observation?
Of course.
Because I watched the last school board meeting and I watched, I took note of all the different slides and at the end of quarter, second quarter, custodial staff was overtime was $74,969. And their sub rate for end of second quarter of this fiscal year was $54,007. So that comes out to approximately $128,000. And as a staff member, I'm just, I'm wanting to know or like to know, are those monies actually budgeted in the custodial staff ledger? And if they are, is, was that an expected number versus now we need to make up the shortfall? And I understand we are all one team. We are, we're food services under Westford Public Schools. We feed thousands of children every day with the understanding that we have life-threatening allergies. As a manager, I am, I'm very cognizant of that. So to then feel that the monies that which we've worked so hard for over the last 10 years to, you know, for the betterment of our department and then to just have this be, oh, we're just going to move a ledger line over. As you can see, we're all wondering, well, how is that? I mean, yes, we're all one team, we understand that. But was that $128,000 for overtime and subs for the custodial department? In my understanding, there aren't any subs in the custodial department. There are no subs, they are contractual union representatives at the schools who fill in at other schools when there aren't any subs. And sub rate for a custodian is $15 an hour. So instead of getting a sub at $15 an hour, they're paying a head custodian time and a half to do that work. So I'm just want, I'd just like to have an understanding of, were these monies budgeted? And if they were, okay, then that's, I understand that. But if they weren't, then how is it that we feel that the monies are being garnered from us for the betterment of another department when us as a department, we have foregone equipment being repaired? We have foregone pay raises because of the town's fiscal situation over the last three contract negotiations. Minimum wage has consistently over the last six years gone up, but contractually, our raises have not, our income streams have not gone up commensurate with that increase in minimum wage. So we can get a sub now for $15, but we have a full-time worker joining us at $16.16 an hour. So it's very hard then for us to get a person to come in to want to work for us or work within our, on our teams because they can go elsewhere for $17.50 at Whole Foods. And yet we still work short-staffed and we still produce the same amount of product that feeds all of our students, but we're short-staffed. We are consistently short-staffed. So again, we're just, we all have questions and that's why we felt compelled to write you letters on behalf of ourselves, but also because we have, we have a team of people that we would like to advocate for.
Yeah, I can see that. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
If there's anyone else in the room, we're going to quickly switch to Zoom. So Patty, you're going to be unmuted and if you want to introduce yourself.
Let me, there we go. Patty, can you hear us? Oh.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Patty Huang for Birchwood. So I've been in touch with the district and school committee for the past few months about the PE policy and I kind of just wanted to express some continued concerns about it. My concerns are obviously the PE policy and its impact on the other WA electives. I did hear in the last meeting that the district is, wants to create a work group to review PE requirements along with other graduation requirements. But like I said, I'm still very confused on why we're not looking at these changes for fall 2024. From the email I forwarded, DESI was very clear on their position regarding PE. They said districts have significant flexibility in designing their PE program, including how much time is spent and what activities comprise the program. They also have discretion to determine if a student may meet PE requirements through an organized program of instructional physical activity like school sports, community programs, or an independent study. In the past, we talked about concerns regarding equity, given the high cost of sport. Offering an independent study which allows a student to define and meet their own fitness goals and plans would be a great option to address these concerns while also helping students who prefer or need something different than a traditional PE classroom. In our last communication, there was concern expressed about disagreement within DESI regarding this policy. I did actually share those concerns with the Center for Instructional Support and they confirmed again that the email I received was consistent with their policy. They advised that the district could contact DESI for confirmation, specifically Erin Hashimoto Martel, the Associate Commissioner of the Center for Instructional Support, and Russell Johnston, the Deputy Commissioner of Education. They also indicated that we could involve the DESI Problem Resolution System Office if there continues to be concern over the policy. I don't think that's necessary if we prioritize changing a policy that has limited our students from exploring electives for almost 25 years, which is basically how long it's been since alternative PE credits have been permitted in the Commonwealth. I know there are concerns with filling schedules with instructional hours if alternative PE credits are an option. I also know there's many students that who participate in sports who would welcome an opportunity to have a DLT to complete their homework and study because their afternoons and evenings are packed with sports. And I know many who don't want a DLT would still prefer an option of selecting an elective from a different department. You guys know I ran a very informal survey and it was very clear that the students that were surveyed wanted options beyond, like wanted flexible PE options. But I know it was very informal and I'm still hoping that WA will conduct a more formal survey to really understand what the students' needs are. Lastly, I just want to address the comment that was made regarding how any change to a graduation requirement needs to be approved by the school committee and rolled in over time. As far as I can tell, this did not happen with the 2021 PE policy change because the policy change actually didn't impact graduation requirements. All schools that offer alternative PE credits have very similar PE graduation requirements to WA because the details of those alternative PE credits are actually in the program of studies, so it's not actually technically a change in graduation requirements. Sorry, that was really fast. That was it.
Thanks Patty.
Any other hands online?
Nothing at the moment, no.
Anyone else in the room would like to come up? Sorry, anyone else in the room that would, I'm going to be doing that all night, would like to come up?
All right. Moving on.
Okay, we'll move on to informational updates, starting with the superintendent.
Thank you. So we've continued with our building tours as we've been working on developing our 10-year master plan and one of the things that came up just before the break when we were visiting WA was we were reminded of the power outage that took place in the PAC during the townwide choral concert. So it's just one of those interesting things as we're looking at all the different needs that our infrastructure has and the facilities have. You know, we went down and looked at the, looked at all of the circuits and everything that was in the, you know, in the belly of the beast, if you will.
Yep.
And it was just one of those scenarios that I think it's important as we are continually trying to celebrate all of the great things that are happening, I think it's important for everybody to also be aware of the different things that we need to be paying attention to as we are looking at all of our buildings and all their needs. Talking about those celebrating things, I'm going to maybe steal a little thunder from one of our school committee members, but I'm going to go ahead and do that. And I want to congratulate Gabriella Sanders and Natalie Weinberg for, they were actually selected for their pieces, their plays to be included in the Boston Theater Marathon, which is every year they select 50 plays and they partner them with 50 different professional institutions in the city of Boston. And the fact that two teenagers have actually had their work selected with this group of people is outstanding. And so on May 5th, the Boston Theater Marathon will be taking place at Boston Playwrights Theater, which is on Commonwealth Avenue. It's actually something that I've been aware for a long time. I've known a lot of people who have participated in it. It's an incredible, it's an incredible event that actually has national, you know, national recognition. People pay attention to it just because of the opportunities that people have. And so for two of our seniors to have that opportunity, I think is outstanding. So we wanted to make sure that we congratulated the two of them as well, too.
And recently, a memo went out from the pre-cated two schools, from the principals, indicating that Monday, April 22nd of this year would be a no-school day for our kindergarten students only. This is going to allow our professional staff to be able to conduct some screening for the incoming 24-25 kindergarten class. The screening is something that takes place every year. However, we don't typically have a day off for that to occur because of some extreme substitute shortages, it makes it very challenging to go ahead and to do the scheduling during the school day and to take away from the students who would just be in front of the substitute rather than their classroom teacher. So this is a model that has, does happen in other districts around us. And one of our incoming principals shared this model with us as it was used in her district and worked out very well. So that Monday following April vacation will be a no-school day for kindergarten students only and will allow us that little bit of wiggle room to complete this professional task.
And is it something that you think, are we like trying it out this year? Because then if it is for future years, we should add it to the calendar.
The calendar, yeah.
We can, we actually, that was one of the things we talked about in terms of, it isn't, it isn't, it isn't necessarily an adjustment to the calendar because we're just making a decision that this one group wouldn't go to school. I think if, I think being proactive about it is certainly better. But that was actually one of the questions that we had was, wait a second, do we need to amend the calendar? And when we looked at it, we don't. So it doesn't need to be an amendment to this year's calendar, but I think for purpose, purposes of planning, it's good to let people know earlier. So I think if it does work, we'll try to make sure that we notate it. We're trying to simplify the calendar. So it's one of those things that we'll look at, right? Like is it, is it, does it help the process or does it hurt the process?
Yeah, to me, it fits in with like the back-to-school nights and kindergarten registration is on there. And even when we have the half-day for just WA, right? All those things really it's one place to, for people to sort of set their yearly family schedule and everything, so. Was that it? That's it.
Great, thank you. School committee updates?
Well, I guess policy we're meeting next.
Next week, yeah.
I'm going to steal some, steal some thunder a little bit. The superintendent has opted to contract with one of those bus routing software providers to look at a little bit of a feasibility on rearranging our, or optimizing our bus schedules. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out in the next two months. And the Start Time Subcommittee will hopefully be like in the loop a little bit and at some point, I think we're sitting back for now, but at some point we'll get Luke back in, I'm sure, and see what the results are of that. So that's, that's a hopeful thing, I think. And we did, last time we, we put out a link for people to submit comment and so we have received quite a few comments from the public about Start Times, almost wholly supportive. And we can, we can put those in an upcoming packet or something, if that makes sense, I think.
Was there a stop date for those? It was kind of open.
I think I.
Open-ended, I think.
It was open-ended.
We said February through March 24 to solicit community feedback, so.
Stop date, but yeah. I'll have to go back and check. I think I meant to put one on there. And then, oh, the other thing, I just, I'm sure a lot of you are aware of the troubling death of the student in Oklahoma next Benedict last week. A gender non-conforming student who died after an incident at school and I know a lot of people concerned about that. So I would just ask that we keep their family and that whole community in our thoughts as they grieve and, and look for answers in the aftermath of that. And then it just feels like an appropriate time as a committee to reaffirm our support of and our solidarity with our, for anyone really who counts themselves part of the Westford LGBTQ plus community, whether it be one of our students in our schools or one of their family members or staff member or just anybody in the Westford community. And so it just feels like an appropriate time to do that. And then also, I'd hate to think I need to even say this, but also a reminder that intolerance and bullying and hate don't have a place in Westford schools. And then I would just point out to folks who maybe don't know this, that we as a committee, not, not many of us were there, but I think it was six years ago, 2017, passed a policy codifying that support of our transgender and gender non-conforming students. It's our policy P5325, if people want to look it up on the district website, they can do so and read it. But it, among other things, it does affirm every student's right to be addressed by a name and pronoun that correspond to their gender identity. And it affirms their right to have access to facilities, bathroom facilities that correspond to their gender identity. And so I just wanted to say that, let people know that that's out there and again, affirm our support when things like this happen. I know it's on people's, on people's minds and in kind of community consciousness.
Appreciate that, thank you. And I, I recognize your, this prompted of just even a sort of check of our existing policies to feel like, okay, what we have in place feels good.
I think so, but I also encourage people if they see things in it that feel, I mean, it's amazing to think it's been six and a half years since we adopted it. So things change and so if things in there don't feel current, that's something people can bring it to our attention. But I think I compared it to some other policies, very similar. I think we, I think we borrowed a lot of language from national organizations that were putting out model policies, so I think a lot of that was at least best practice at the time.
Okay, great.
It is the policy that I believe Marisol had referenced earlier in the year too at a, at a meeting or a conference that she was a part of, that then they were actually using our policy as a model.
Yeah.
Example, so that, that I think is also reaffirming.
Great, thank you. Sorry, no update.
Two just reminders for meetings coming up this week. Wednesday is Town DEI meeting, which takes place, it's virtual and, well, it's hybrid, I should say, so it's all, it's here and available online. And then Thursday at 7:00, again, in a hybrid, taking place here in Millennium or again online, is the CPAC business meeting, which I'm very excited to have Valerie and Dr. Chu and Director Cochrane joining us, talking all things budget, special education related.
Limited to 40 minutes.
Limited to 40 minutes apparently, but you are more than welcome to stay for the
Yes.
other agenda items.
I do actually fit within the timeframe when I'm given those limits. I just pay attention to it and make sure we fill it up.
Well, my update was going to be that we've done our budget road shows now for the WA students, which went really well and like kind of gave a safe space for their questions and their comments without feeling like they had to attend some sort of public meeting to be able to ask their questions. And where else did we go? Oh, the Westford Rotary for another budget road show, so we're getting really good at them. So by the time we see CPAC.
They've all been different.
Yeah.
That's been great, right?
I suppose it's different audiences, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, and then.
Next Monday, correct? Open budget forum for the public, which will be.
In this room.
In this room.
Monday, March 4th, hybrid, another public audience, open, general, open forum for the FY25 budget and override information session. And with that, I was also going to remind everybody about Town Meeting, which is Saturday, March 23rd at Westford Academy, scheduled to start at 9 o'clock. The override article is scheduled to be first. Registration starts at 8:00 AM and there's a lot of workshopping on the logistics to help make it go a little bit more smoothly than October, including overflow parking lots in Roberts, at Robinson and Chrisifouli with shuttle service. We now have 1,600, yeah, 1,600 clickers, so for two rooms to use in the PAC and the gym. There is also going to be lunch options on site and there is free childcare if you sign up by March 20th. And that's run by the Westford Rec Department and it's down in the auxiliary gym. My kids have gone, had a great time, basketballs, coloring books, all kinds of things. And there's also free transportation, all these links are on the town website. And just a reminder that the voter registration date to even just check your voter registration, because if you don't fill in your census and stuff like that, you can be taken off lists like that. So the voter registration date is Wednesday, March 13th.
Get your census in, if you haven't.
And/or check your registration.
Which is in general, get your census in.
Okay, I think that was it.
Can you indulge me one more thing?
Sure.
I apologize, but I would be remiss and get scolded when I got home. Westford Academy Theater Arts is doing their, every year they enter, as part of the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, their competition play. So it's like a state tournament basically for theater. And their play is going up this week and so it's called Disgraced, it's a Pulitzer Prize winning play. I know it grapples with some, some pretty weighty issues, but I really encourage people to go out and see it. You can see it the next two Thursdays, February 29th and March 7th at WA, or you can go and see all, they're hosting the first round of the festival this Saturday at Westford Academy. So you could get a ticket and see up to, I think, seven plays that day. It's a, it's a 40-minute play, so it's not going to take up a lot of your time. And I think after the plays on the 29th and the 7th, there's like a talkback with the cast because again, to just kind of talk through some of the things that, the issues and matters that get raised during the play itself.
That was February 29th and March 7th.
February 29th and March 7th at 8:00 PM.
And the other thing you should, we should probably be mentioning is this, they won the rights to Harry Potter, which I think is amazing.
Yeah, they'll be doing that next year.
One of, what, 29 schools across the nation?
The only school in Massachusetts, yeah.
The only school in Massachusetts.
Assuming we haven't stolen all of your updates.
Oh, no, I always forget that. I always forget that Alex has got a whole laundry list.
We're going to move student updates first.
Yeah, that's what we should do.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so right before February break, the eighth graders from both Sony Brook and Blanchard came to WA. The WA peer counselors did a nice job welcoming them, giving tours, and that really kicks off their high school transition process. And just today at Westford Academy, the current students met with all of their teachers to get recommendations for next year's courses. So it's also kind of kicking off the scheduling process for next year, which will be a little bit different just because of the budget things. I wasn't involved in that because I'm a senior, so we didn't really have that today. But from what I've heard, there's going to be almost like two, almost like two different scheduling options.
Thanks, anything else?
No, that's it.
Thanks, Al. 7:27, we're going to move on to our 7:30 business item, which is the FY25 budget. So we always want to remind ourselves that people may be joining this conversation at different times and so even though we have been talking about this since December, that this could be new information to someone. And the goal tonight for all of us is to arrive at a vote because the FinCom book gets written on, starting March 1st or finished, I'm sorry. And we have always, this year was a little bit different. We've always voted before the FinCom department review process and we did send them at that point, our level service needs request. And since then, we have been directed by the Select Board to reduce that request by a certain number, which he will walk us through, so that, that new number needs a vote.
Yes, thank you. So there were some conversations as to whether or not we should be starting with a new slide deck or not. And I feel like for the purposes of the work that we've been doing in these meetings, the linear narrative, if you will, of just following through the slides, we did make them green at the end to try to make them pop a little bit as the new, as the new last couple of slides, but yes, as Valerie is just saying, based on the Select Board meeting on February 13th, the Select Board voted to request that the town manager and I both make a final reduction of our needs request budget. So the overall town budget, the overall town budget that was initially presented, we're now reducing by a million dollars overall. And so then that's divided between the schools and the towns. So one of the things that I want to be clear about is that some of my previous recommendations are no longer things that we're still talking about. It's, in some ways, it's sort of a fresh discussion, but I think in, in order for people to follow the journey that we've been on, because this is now our sixth public meeting discussing the school budget just with the school committee alone. We typically do this in three meetings. This year, we've done this in six meetings and that's again, just the school committee meetings alone. That's not including all the other meetings and everything else, right? So if we go ahead and go to the next slide, thank you Catherine. So the new target, if you look on the, on the third row down, our. our, our initial recommended FY twenty-five needs request that you have already voted on was seventy million, five hundred and five thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that is, that was a vote that was taken earlier. You, you supported that as the needs request that we had sent forward. Then following the FinCom hearings and following some additional meetings with the Select Board, tonight, our updated number, which I'm going to recommend to you that you, um, consider approving, will be sixty-nine million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for the FY twenty-five general fund operational budget. So that is a five-point-eight percent increase over our FY twenty-four budget, and it's a reduction from our initial request back in December of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Okay, so that's, we're kind of stepping through this. Go ahead and go. So now what, some of the things are similar recommendations that I've made earlier, but these, this is now the final package, if you will. So in order to meet these two targets, the recommendation is that we continue to reduce the comp reserve, as we'd mentioned previously, by a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Based on the information that we had looked at with our, um, with our bus contract, we believe that we can reduce that line item by a hundred thousand dollars. And then based on feedback that we've been receiving, um, I believe that we should be reducing our district-wide administration by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be eliminating the Director of Equity, Curriculum and Instruction position, and restructuring our K to five curriculum coordinators for STEM and Humanities. While those are not recommendations that I make lightly, um, they're recommendations that existed in our no override budget, and as we've been talking about developing this compromise budget, those are recommendations that have, of all of those other recommendations, have the least potential impact directly on students. There, it's still not a good idea, okay? I want to be clear about that. It's still not a good idea, but I, but that's, that I feel like is, based on what we've been asked to do, that would be my recommendation. So that, of those reductions, we would end up with five hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars of new reductions to help get us to that target. And if you go to the next slide, Catherine, the other conversations that we've been having specifically since our FinCom hearings as well was this notion of offsets. So that first line item, and I think we'll talk more about this specifically based on just some questions that we've heard recently too, is that, um, the recommendation is to increase our food service offset to a hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. So now that is an allowable, um, usage according to the USDA guidelines as to indirect offsets for how you use the food service accounts. And I'll be happy to answer questions that you might have about this as, as we talk more, as we talk through this. Previously, the recommendations that we had, we had, in an, in a previous, last year, we had, we were only offsetting our budget by five thousand dollars. And you'll see in a later slide that we had suggested that we increased that to four thousand, I mean, we increased it by four thousand dollars just to nine thousand dollars, just to support the work that's done in the business office that supports, um, food service as well, too. Then this question specifically came up in the FinCom hearings. They asked the question about the, the high amount that exists in the food service account and whether or not there were more offsets. So we investigated and, and the, the most direct indirect cost seems to be supporting some of the work that our, our head custodian specifically do during the day, supporting the, the, the lunch program. Based on just a question that we had earlier, I just want to clearly say it is not about any overage. It's not about, um, not budgeting anything in a, in, in a, in a specific line item. It was directed from a request that came from the FinCom, because the first thing that we had realized is that while all of the food service employees, all of their salaries were coming out of the food service account, their benefits were not. So the benefits were being, were coming from the town side. So that was the first question that was asked, was if it's going to, we, we've claimed that it was self-funded, right? And that's probably not an accurate term, because right now, I think it's at least one point three, actually, it's over, I think it's over two million dollars of it is coming from the government, right? So it's federal funding and state funding with the universal, um, the universal lunch program that has now been voted in, that is, that has had a massive impact. Now granted, we know the work that's being done to support that, but that money is not being generated by the sales in the cafeterias specifically. So that would be a one, that, so that offset would help us to just, it would, it would just pay for part of the head custodian's salaries, right? Which is, again, it, within that, um, there's a link to the memo with the USDA guidelines that talk about all the potential offsets as well. So then another increase, we are looking at increasing the Integrated Preschool Revolving Fund by another fifty thousand dollars. So that would help us, um, cover the cost of the midday run of the bus transportation. So if you look here in both of these lines, I didn't say that earlier. Um, Jenny's helped us to, um, give us the total amount for what that offset would be. So for the first line, the food service offset, the total amount of that account for FY twenty-five would be at one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. And then for the Integrated Preschool Revolving Account, we are now, we would be increasing it so that the total amount for, that would be offset for fiscal year twenty-five would be two hundred and fifty thou- two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Another one of the increases is fifteen thousand, an increase of fifteen thousand dollars to offset more of the music teacher salaries. That would take that offset, that would increase it to a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for FY twenty-five. And then finally, the last increase would be the building usage. We would increase it by ten hun- by ten thousand dollars, which would increase the total FY twenty-five offset to thirty thousand dollars. When we add all of that up, that's two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Those two items from this slide and the previous slide equals seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is the balance that gets us to the target that the Select Board has asked us to reach. So that's the first couple of slides. Then the next couple of slides, I wanted to remind everybody what we've already done, right? So this is a recap of the initial adjustments. So I took some of the slides from the previ- for earlier in the slide presentation, and I want to kind of just remind people of some of these initial adjustments, so we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So I want to remind everybody that in, in order to even get to our initial FY twenty-five needs, needs request, we were already making a reduction based on enrollment. So we're already decreasing two FTEs at the middle schools, two-point-two FTEs at Westford Academy, four FTEs at the elementary level, and you see the numbers associated with that, if you go to the next slide. Again, we already talked about eliminating our special education in district transportation, which would, we, we're projecting a, a savings of a two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We're also recommending that we eliminate the data specialist position at sixty-three thousand dollars, giving us a total of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of reductions before we ever got to our needs reduction. And in that, that actual rationale, um, I'll update this and repost it, because I actually put there that that, reminding everybody that that's approximately twenty-seven staff members, right? So when we add those up, that's approximately twenty-seven staff members. The other thing that we had talked about, if you go to the next slide, um, was that we, based on the needs, based on what we had talked about with the presentation that we'd had for our eight to, eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program, and then the fact that we've already needed to hire an additional ESL teacher, we need to build those recommendations into our budget as well, too. So these, while those reductions that I just mentioned exist in both of the FY twenty-five scenarios, as do these additions. So both of these additions already exist in both of the, in both of the FY twenty-five scenarios, whether it's an override or a non-override budget. We are committed to moving forward with an eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program, and we need the ESL position as well, too. Now, that's an increase of approximately four positions. So even before we hit our, even before you voted, my recommendation was that we were going to be decreasing by twenty, approximately twenty-three positions. Okay, um, if you'd go to the next slide, that kind of just talks about the different offsets that we had already mentioned earlier. I just want people to remember this, that we had already talked about increasing our school choice from four forty to four sixty, so that's included in the budget as well, too. I talked about the four thousand dollar offset from food services just a moment ago. It was already five thousand. We increased it to four thousand. Then we talked about, um, offsetting some of the custodial salaries with it as well, too. So this is just a copy of an earlier slide, so that we can kind of remember the conversation that we had. We had already increased our offset of activity fees, twenty-five thousand dollars, and we had also already had an increase of the fifteen thousand offset from music fees, plus the bus revolving fee of forty-five thousand dollars. And then one thing that had come up a couple of times in our, um, conversations with our roadshows was just the notion that we had actually already reduced our, um, subscriptions, our technology subscriptions by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as well, too. Um, those are things, those are things that we've already been looking at and things that we've already done. So a slide, the next slide, Catherine, just shows what we had done earlier, reminding people that that's, that was work that we did to even get to our needs-based budget. And sometimes people can say, well, if it wasn't in your needs-based budget, then those aren't really cuts. But I want to remind you again, that's twenty-seven people who have jobs who will not have jobs. That is a cut. Whether it's because of it's an enrollment issue or not, it's a very real reduction that I think it's important for people to, to understand. Um, and then the last slide is, um, if you go one more, thank you. Jenny, I asked Jenny to update, because she did such a nice job kind of spelling this out for everybody again. So now in our new, um, even with an override scenario, we've included the district-wide administration in that top line, so we're looking at reducing thirty-point-two positions and adding four-point-four positions for a net change of twenty-five-point-four reduction in the, in the top section. And then if the override doesn't pass, we will see this additional reduction of fifty, um, instructional individuals in different categories, taking us down to the bottom of what a potential overall reduction of seventy-point-two. So that's, the last couple of slides were just the reminders of how we got there. Those first four slides are what the recommendations are right now. My, uh, my ask of you would be that you vote tonight to, um, approve the sixty-nine million dollar budget that, that, that we included in that slide earlier. And, and we are able to present to the FinCom and the Select Board that new number.
In Town Meeting.
In Town Meeting, yeah.
Thank you. Questions? Yeah, yeah.
First, thank you for the presentation of it. Like, I like that you've kept it together. I appreciate the change in color. I think today's, like, the recap was really helpful and really effective, so, so I'm glad you've done it the way you've done it. Appreciate all the time that people put in to make this relatively readable and understandable, because I know it's, it's, it's confusing and it's complicated, and we've had six meetings. Um, can we scroll to the offset slide?
The original offsets or the new?
Yeah, no, this one. Um, it says offset, yeah.
Yep.
I just think it might be helpful for people to hear what you expect the impacts of doing this to be, or, or, or risks, right? Like, you know, I, I.
What's remaining?
What's that?
Like what's remaining in the kinds of.
Without, you don't have to get into the numbers, but like, are there some that, there is a concern that this, we can't do this year after year. Um, and then I think maybe for food service, it would be helpful to talk about the impacts and how does this play with food service contracts and kitchen supplies and things like that.
Right, so currently, what we have is we have four months of reserve in our food service account. So, um, Jenny, not to put you on the spot, but you can probably do it anyway. Can you tell us how much is in the food service account right now?
So yes, I will give you the number for the second quarter of fiscal year twenty-four. Your food service account, uh, balance is one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, two hundred and eleven.
Okay, so that's one of the things that has actually been a common question, about that amount of money that exists in the food service account and how it is built up. And it's built up significantly with the support of the Universal School Lunch Program. And so that was a challenge that was given to us by the FinCom, based on, okay, you have, that we have this amount in the revolving accounts. Now, DESI guidelines suggest that we keep three months of operating costs in reserve, because you, anything could happen, right? And so you want to make sure that you can, you can effectively pay your bills. We have four months in there. So that's one of the reasons why I would say that this additional increase doesn't, doesn't compromise our ability to still have the reserve that we should have in there, and for us to still responsibly be able to meet the needs of the food service staff and the, and the program needs, in terms of, um, making sure that we're still able to pay competitive wages, make sure we're still able to meet the, um, needs of any, you know, any typical malfunction that might exist. I mean, for example, most recently, we, we used money from the food service, uh, account to, um, to cover the costs of the, the Miller, the Miller freezer, um, issue that took place. And so that was, that was a significant cost. The money was there in order to, in order to do that.
Was that to replace it? Was it a different?
Yeah, it was, um, it was part of last year's capital
Yeah.
process, where it, there was a question as to whether it was done correctly or not, um, by the people who installed it, but it, it had been failing. We needed to replace it, and we were able to do that.
Typically, when we're purchasing equipment for the cafeterias, the kitchens, is that, should that be coming out of the food service revolving account, or is that typically a capital?
Well, it, depending on the cost, it needs to go through capital.
Okay.
Whether the funding source is from the schools and whether it's from food service, or whether it's, that, that is debatable. It kind of depends on the, what, depends on the nature of the, of the, of the, um, of the issue and whether the funds are available. But as far as our practice in the town of Westford, it has to go through the capital committee, and it has to go through the capital process.
So I was just going to add, it's sort of a misnomer to say like goes through capital. Doesn't necessarily mean it comes with funding, but it goes through that sort of approval and like, um, due diligence of that committee. But it, the, part of that is always, is there another, is there a mechanism to fund this?
Right.
Yeah, gotcha.
And so if I can just follow, so to be really clear, expenditures in food service aren't changing. We're not changing staffing. We're not changing how we support, um, whether it be equipment or food, you know, a- any of that, like, staying the same. All this is doing, just so people understand, i- is reducing the balance of the revolving account. We're drawing down to support
Right.
different needs next year, with the risk that, I mean, we're still above what DESI recommends in a revolving account, so we're still actually above what best practice is. And again, worst-case risks are, and I think it speaks to, to all of our revolving accounts, is that it'll be interesting the next few years just to keep an eye on what they're at. And can we, are, are, do we feel comfortable with lower balances in there?
Right.
Um, and that we feel like we're safely operating there, because this, you know, we haven't done a wholesale reduction like this in multiple accounts in a while.
Right, and I will say, I, I, I do feel somewhat compelled, based on, on a comment that was made earlier, to remind the committee that last year and this to remind the committee that last year and this year, you approved a three point five percent increase in the food service wages. And based on, while the contract was already settled, we looked at that to see if there's something that we can actually do to move in the right direction. And you approved increasing the hours that they're working as well to help support what's going on in the Universal Lunch Program. Based on all of that, we can, we still know that there's money in this account in order to support that.
And a year from now, we'll be coming back to look at that, to make sure all that still looks healthy.
Correct.
That we are, that the wages and the hours and the revolving account balance are sufficient to do what we wanna do.
Yeah, what's our current contract timeline?
We're gonna be opening negotiations this spring.
Next couple of weeks. Next couple of weeks. And just to follow up on that, too, is that, that's, you know, part of the long-term strategy of the finance subcommittee, right? Like, a lot of these offsets that came out of some of the FinCom questions are things that we think are good ideas. Some, you know, in moderation, and that we probably, we ideally would've worked towards anyway. We just hadn't gotten to that point of having like, that policy written. But yes, that's definitely on our plate to sort of find that sweet spot and say, like, you know, is this sustainable? Are these amounts sustainable? But with the situation we're in, this is the recommendation to try to find that compromise and that balance of what, how can we sort of sustain what we know the district needs with what we're asking of the taxpayer?
Since the institution of the Universal Lunch Program, can we reasonably project out where food service revolving funds might go in the foreseeable future? Based on number of meals, based on, and this, I think that's a really important part as we're looking ahead, because the finance committee talks so much about revolving funds and how we could draw down in some areas and also keep it tight, not, you know, fill our coffers. But I think it's important to also be thinking about keeping a steady, you know, balance somewhere in the middle. You know, I mean, the previous comment we heard, over ten years of filling the fund. But, you know, the next years are gonna be very tight, and I'm just, that's a question.
It's a good question, and I will say, currently, our governor is committed to continuing the school lunch program.
Correct.
The other thing I would say is that, right now, our year-to-date revenue breakdown, seventy-seven percent of it is supported by the state and the federal government. So I don't-
So, so three out of every four dollars-
Seventy-seven percent of it is supported by the reimbursement that we're getting from.
And not what we're generating, okay.
Right. So, I feel like that's a good, that's good. That's actually, that's very, that's very healthy for the future. Because the governor has remained committed to making this now a permanent thing, which I think is great. 'Cause there was something, there was a concern, even just when it started, as to whether or not this was something that would continue and whether or not it's something that was sustainable. But they're committed to it, so to that end, while we can't project it out specifically-
And I gotta think our drop in that pond is smaller compared to the, all the districts, okay.
And we haven't seen a decrease, I mean, students are, they're enjoying the meals, right? I mean, everything that was said earlier, man, about the work that they're doing, the food is great, they're doing a great job.
My daughter, my daughter raised about it.
So I don't see that dropping, I don't see that changing in any way. That's why I, I sort of, I guess, outside of what we normally do, I would love to just take a moment and say, I one hundred percent appreciate the concern and the confusion that was mentioned earlier. I am challenged and/or concerned about the notion that it's their money, that it's food service money specifically. And yes, multiple people talked about, we're all on the same team. This was never a suggestion to pay something that was over, you know, overdrawn. It was in response to the FinCom asking us, "How can we be better stewards of the taxpayers' money? Are there ways in which we can rebalance things?" And when we look at it, and we looked at the way in which other districts will do things, and what the examples are, I mean, honestly, the examples that the USDA gives is benefits across the board are included, that a portion of the superintendent's salary and administrator's salaries, I mean, it's like-
Utility costs.
Utility costs, which I don't think is what we wanna do. We wanna do something that, okay, this at least is, although it's called an indirect cost, it at least makes sense. But it was never intended to be received or communicated as taking from somebody to give to somebody else, because it's all part of the school budget, and it's all part of the town budget.
And I think it's helpful to think about it on this slide with the building usage, because that is, again, something that we have other groups that come in and use our buildings, and we offset our custodian salaries for that purpose, too. So, even though it's in our buildings in the same, you know, the same one budget idea, it's, it follows that same practice, I think.
Right.
And I also, I think there's maybe a little bit of a fundamental confusion about the revolving account. In that, and we happen to have one called food service offset, or food service revolving account, that is not our food service budget.
Right.
Our food service budget is not changing, it's sort of tracking, right? It's, we're not reducing food services budget at all. This just happens to be a way of buffering the money so that we have safety. It's just where the money is coming from. But the food service budget, and I wanna make sure everybody hears, is not changing. We're not cutting anything from food service, we're not, and by DESI standards, we're not jeopardizing food services. It's almost like we should rename that a little bit, because it's, it's an account of money that we can use in a number of different ways.
Correct.
Per law, maybe we have to call it food service revolving, I don't know. But I do feel like maybe there's a misunderstanding, I just, I can't drive that home enough, that we're not changing the food service budget.
Can I ask, just again, it was brought up earlier on to speak, mention on the custodians overtime? And maybe to clarify kind of that, I think it would be helpful. And there was also mention of potential being short-staffed in our cafeterias. And I just wanted to kind of, if you have information or if you can follow up on that.
Well, I definitely think subs are short for both food services and for custodians. Yeah, I mean, that's difficult, that's a difficult, that's absolutely true. It's very difficult to find coverage for both of those positions. We talked about the overage, and the reason why the line item was over, the sub-line is not over in the custodial line item. So overall, our budget is, we have not extended our budget, we have not overspent. But we want everything to be accounted for accurately. And because our custodians were working overtime in order to cover shifts that there was not a sub for, it goes into that actual line item. You can't use the sub-line item, 'cause it's not, you're not paying a sub, you're actually paying our custodians. So, we've not over, we haven't overspent. We paid, but we accurately accounted for it, if that makes sense.
They're essentially, yeah, so they're essentially subbing for a lack of subs, but they have to get overtime.
We've had a number of custodians who were not able to use their vacation time, who weren't able to, because they were doing double shifts, because we had people who were out on medical leave, we had people who were out on just, well, just different leaves. And it was impacting then our coverage in the buildings, yeah.
And just subs in general, across classrooms and other staff, just seems to be-
Just a challenge, yeah.
Other questions on this slide? Otherwise, I'd recommend we, sorry, any other?
Yeah, the previous slide.
This one? That's where I was gonna move us, yep.
So, I commend the superintendent actually looking to the admin first, because that's the general sentiment. It's like, we're actually, we're actually not cutting admin first. So like, doing this, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's a lot of like, teachers we saved. So I commend the superintendent on that, which I think people are happy about this part. I wouldn't actually get into like, because I wanted to express like, how much the impact to the taxpayers in previous meetings. So I would actually reiterate that, I think like, the six, six point six million, the-
Eight, six point eight.
Six point eight million, the impact on the average household is like, still very significant for a lot of taxpayers. It may be counterintuitive, but that's the truth, is like, it's beneficial for both families without kids in town. Because if you think about the scenario, well, a thousand seniors with families without kids, then swapped with a thousand families with kids, immediately everybody's property tax will go through the roof, because suddenly you have to support a thousand more kids. So, the seniors and the families without kids, their property tax is a significant source for helping the school budget. So, it may be counterintuitive, and that's why I express like, concern about the magnitude of the budget being asked. But, yeah, that's my comment.
Thank you. I just wanna, at least for right now, stay on the FY twenty-five school request. And then we can, once we sort of nail down that and make sure there's no more questions, if you have thoughts on, 'cause the Select Board will vote tomorrow night on which, the most recent memo outlines two scenarios, a six million dollar override scenario and a six point eight million dollar override scenario. And they'll choose and vote on that.
And just to clarify, 'cause I actually had a neighbor reach out to me today to clarify that. If the Select Board votes to do a six million dollar override as opposed to a six point eight, we have the same ask in both scenarios, is it just the stabilization fund is reduced? Is that my-
They've, they have asked us to reduce the overall budget by this million dollars, right? So, in terms of the impacts of a six versus a six point eight million, the impacts are, the initial, the initial impacts are similar, it's the outcome. It's, I mean, it's the FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven that changes. So I think that's what you said, I think you were saying like, it's the idea that in their discussion, it makes a difference as to what is used in the future.
Yeah, that's stabilization.
To like, really make it super clear, our vote tonight on a sixty-nine million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, six, eight hundred and thirty-six million dollar budget is the same, whether it's a six million dollar override or a six point eight million dollar override. It's just a difference of how those, how those, 'cause the contracts that we're facing and the expenses that we're facing don't just increase in FY twenty-five, they step in. Like, I can't remember the exact number for the waste collection, and we know that for units A and C, but there's another step increase for FY twenty-six.
Yeah.
And so, there's, even if, even if you, even if you close the budget gap for FY twenty-five, there's another one for FY twenty-six.
Even if we're, even doing the six point eight, I think that's important for everybody to know, that we'll be having more of these conversations over the next couple of years, yeah, but, okay.
So I just, I guess I just wanna not get numb to what's on this slide, even though we have seen it before, which is the, like, what we are losing with those district-wide admin positions. So if you could speak to that a little bit.
I was gonna ask, can we talk about where we are right now with curriculum coordinators and what's the reduction mean? I'm judging that it's a two point O FTE, if we're talking the DEI coordinator being a one point O FTE, how does that change the curriculum coordinator structure in the district?
Yeah, so, so yes, so our director of, our Director of Equity Curriculum and Instruction is one point O. We, the model that we currently have is that we have one K to two STEM curriculum coordinator and a three to five STEM curriculum coordinator. We also have a K to two humanities coordinator and a three to five humanities coordinator. The support that they're providing across the buildings and the number of staff that they're supporting, including the number of evaluations that they're writing and feedback that they're providing, I think is well-balanced as in relationship to the other administrators in the district. This reduction would mean that we would go with one K to five-
Humanities and one K to five STEM.
Yes.
But it's technically, we have one position unfilled.
So we have one position that is unfilled right now, a person resigned, and we didn't fill the position.
Yeah.
It's been a struggle.
Yeah.
We have individuals who are helping with professional development, but there's a lot of other work that's not being done and/or has been passed on to other people, so it is a struggle. However, absorbing, if, based on looking at FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven, knowing that we are still gonna be looking at difficult scenarios in the future as well, too, making this decision now is potentially better than hiring somebody only to then let somebody go again.
You mentioned professional development, can you talk a little bit about if there's responsibilities that would be lost in this scenario and how we would manage that?
Do you wanna talk about it?
Sure, I mean, there are definitely responsibilities that would be lost. And from the curriculum coordinator's perspective, they really have, you know, a thumb on the implementation of our new curriculum, especially within ELA at this point, at the elementary level. And math has been patiently waiting its turn to get in there as well and to update some of their math curriculum. But certainly, our commitment to the science of reading has kind of trumped that piece of it. And so, when we have curriculum coordinators that are able to help with the evaluation process, coach in the classroom, and to really be a support to our principals and assistant principals, who are the instructional leaders when they're not in the building, that that will be, that absence will be felt. Additionally, the Director of Curriculum, Equity Curriculum Instruction does oversee all of the professional development for the district, so that responsibility will shift. I know many times we talk about, you know, student-facing positions, that we don't wanna lose that, which is true. We really don't wanna lose any positions, because the amount of work that is required of the district, which not everybody sees in terms of reports to the state, is very cumbersome. The grant writing, following up on the grants, right now, we have several audits that are going on. So there is a lot of work that needs to be done that's tied to funding. You don't do it, you don't get the money. You don't do it correctly, you get your hands slapped, and then you kinda have to go back and you have to then allocate your funds to correcting that. So, it's definitely been a model for other districts, that other districts have not been able to, you know, find the funding to do. And it is, you know, disappointing that we're at a point where we do have to make some choices. But, given that, we are, we've talked about this internally, and we do have a plan of how we will go forward, supporting definitely the principals and assistant principals as they try to navigate all of those teacher evaluations, as well as fulfilling all of our district responsibilities and report writing and accountability to the state.
Do our principals currently, all, the teacher evaluations, they're not just done solely by the curriculum coordinators?
Absolutely not, it's all hands-on deck.
All of our principals and assistant principals do teacher evaluations.
Yeah. Are they all evaluating, are they each, like, is the principal and curriculum coordinator both evaluating every year, or is it on a cycle?
They're all evaluating every single year, they divide up who they evaluate.
So it's essentially across every three years kind of thing in terms of-
Every year, there is a touch.
So they'll be like, okay, the, I, no, 'cause we also have two different scenarios, right? We have, we have individuals, primarily non-professional status individuals, who are on one-year cycles. And then the vast majority of our professional status employees are on a two-year cycle, right? And then, but then one of the things that- And then, but then one of the things that always happens is we always have, um, a draft, if you will, where people are talking about, okay, this person, I evaluated this person last year, so therefore, which of the, whether it's the principal, the assistant principal, or the curriculum coordinator, which of those three individuals should take the person for the next cycle? Right, so that they're, so that they're benefiting from additional feedback, so they're additionally, you know, benefiting from, um,
So even though the curriculum coordinator is supporting, you know, I don't know, thirty teachers in this su- subject area, they're maybe only evaluating ten of those teachers every year?
Correct.
Okay.
In, but maybe in each building, I mean, they go across three, three different buildings.
That's one of the things that will change in this, is that the, the three to, the, the, the STEM and the humanities elementary, they will now be responsible for six buildings, right, each. And so, and they're elementary, so that means they're actually working with the entire classroom staff. It's not like the six through twelve departments where it's, there are only certain people that are in that content area, right? Every single elementary teacher is, is working in those content areas, so they're a part of supporting them. So we'll have to look and see what is a manageable load, um, if any, you know?
You know, and it's maybe something to look at, um, you know, as you kind of restructure, is maybe reviewing the literacy specialists within our K to five buildings, and maybe how we're using them to maybe better support that curriculum coordinator. I know specifically in ELA, we, we can't necessarily do it within, but the fact we have literacy specialists, you know, I, I see them as very much connected to, to some of the work that the curriculum coordinators do, so.
And the literacy, the literally, the literacy specialists right now do provide support, right? They, they do provide additional support in, in addition to working with students directly, which I think is, is great. They don't, they're, they're not administrators, and they don't do any evaluations, right? So that, that piece of it is still going to fall on, on other people's shoulders, yeah.
Can I ask one other thing that maybe down the line, it's, it's not for now, and it, it's just obviously, as we're speaking about the director of equity curriculum and instruction, and again, I also don't take it lightly that we're having this conversation. I really liked that position, it crystallized for me when, when, um, you had, um, Magali sit in front of us that day, I was like, oh, I, I, I get what you saw in it now. And, and so I am very disappointed that we have to have this conversation. But one of the really big, um, things that I felt was coming with that position was that introduction of UDL.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know it's something that, it's a kind of a district-wide, um, kind of that we, we are looking to, um, embed, um, within our classrooms. And I know we were really only beg, at the very, very, very start of that whole process. So, um, I, it would be really great at, at some point that we could maybe see a kind of a, a plan around
Yeah.
how we continue to roll that out.
I mean, one of the things that we've been doing for the last two years is building our own capacity.
Yeah.
Right? So building that expertise among all the curriculum coordinators and above, and among the building leadership as well, too, in order to roll that out to the next level, where then they're supporting more and more teachers, because it takes a number of years to really do that. So our, while losing this position is going to be a very difficult thing in terms of what Courtney was saying, that other people are going to have to pick up all these responsibilities, so it's going to be adding to other people's plates.
Yeah.
Our plan still remains intact.
And we actually saw that plan in great, you know, practice several weeks ago, when, um, the curriculum coordinator team, including, you know, Magali and the rest of the curriculum coordinators led a great professional development for all of our forty district, um, leaders. And, um, what was nice about that was they were able to take all the fundamentals of UDL and really make it personal to who the Westford student is, and, and to make it practical, and divide up into different grade levels, um, and to have some really rich conversations and have some great takeaways. So I think that we're, we're slowly inching our way there.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments about these two slides of this final package to meet the FY twenty-five reductions?
Again, just before we vote, I mean, I, I can't say enough to, um, Dr. Chu and Jenny about all the work that's gone in. I mean, it's, what is this now, budget variation number five, six, one hundred and three? So, um, and I know we fire a lot of questions at she and stuff, so thank you again for, for all the work and patience.
And your staff, too, I know.
Very true.
There, there are people behind, behind you supporting the work. And to Valerie, we're being everywhere all the time on this stuff, really incredible couple of months.
And it's, it's not over, right? So, wha, I just want to, I guess, reiterate, our vote tonight would be to, um, or my suggestion on a motion, I haven't made one yet, but would be to, uh, approve that number, I'm not going to say it again, um, but I will in the motion, um, for the, oh, for what our town meeting request is. I think we still have ano- another meeting in March, that if there's further questions on what our budget would look like with the no override scenario, because I do want to make sure that that's as firmed up as possible going into town meetings, so that people know what they, what, what's at stake with that vote. And, uh, but that doesn't have to be, I was trying to separate them a little bit to give some breathing room, right? To like, focus, this is tonight on what, I don't even want to use the word level service anymore to respond, to, to call this, because it's, it's not, it's not even really a needs request. It's our, a compromise with, with town meeting, hopefully, that here's what we think, um, we, is a responsible adjustment, I guess. So I, I guess my point was just that, to separate them, that this is not the end of FY twenty-five budget conversations. And to Ming Chen's point earlier, there is, um, an override, uh, choice at the, on the table for select board to choose to vote on, and that will, we can continue to talk about what that impact is to the schools, because those memos do a good job, I think, of reminding people that the impact is not just in FY twenty-five. If the override is not successful, that the impact continues to have impact in FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven. And not just, um, you had mentioned this earlier, but that there are planned, like, planned projection, uh, planned reductions, even with an override. So sometimes the word override gets all those, um, like, uh, connotations associated with it. Sometimes people think it's like this magic word, that you're going to have everything you need forever, right? And that's not at all what this has become. This is very much, I can't think of another word at the moment besides compromise. This is very much, um, what we hope, or what the select board would, is hoping that can, is, has a chance of being successful. But it is not, does not mean that there are not tough budget decisions in the next couple of years, still.
Correct.
I mean, you, you said that really well, I think you encapsulated a lot of.
You did, no, I think you summarized a lot of, like, what this means and what we've done. And, you know, I, I, I echo the sentiments of, when I look at these slides, yeah, I see people. I see, I see really, really valuable staff that have made the district better. You know, even in the cases where we've done reductions because of enrollment, I mean, that's still just, just these people who have made such an impact on our students that it's just, it's really, it's really hard. But as you said, I think compromise is what we're looking at. And when you try to do compromise or get consensus, it's, it's what can we live with? And I think, given what you said about the next couple of years, we, we kind of have to live with this, and it, it makes sense to do some of this now. And I, my hope, my hope is that we work in concert with our town partners and with FinCom and Select Board, and that, that we all can, can help, um, make this as bad as it's going to get. Let's put it that way. I, I don't know if we'll be taking a vote on the over, I imagine we will be taking a vote as a committee, whether or not to approve the override ballot.
We can, yeah, we can take a vote, not tonight, on, and, on, in support of an article or not, the override article one. We could also consider the, um, we had that recent presentation about the MBTA multifamily zoning, like, I mean, we're at liberty to support any, take positions as much as we'd like, but, um, yeah. So that will be, again.
A later meeting, yeah.
Well, my hope would be that the boards work together to support what looks to be a, a hard but reasonable compromise budget.
Right, because the other flip side of the override being a magic word that fixes everything is that it's not, it's not a, uh, rated R word. I can't think, I can't think of what, what to say, but, um, it, it doesn't mean there's mismanagement, it doesn't mean there's overspending, it is a tool as part of the Prop two and a half law that communities can decide to right-size their revenue based on increasing expenses, and.
And we are not the only town in the state of Massachusetts in this exact.
In our, in our, in our local area, we're not even there.
Yeah, and I, I think that's really important to, to put that, you know, information out there, because so, so many conversations we've been having, it, you know, there can be with people, maybe, who, I totally guess, you're not watching us every Monday night or, or Select Board, but kind of this question of have, has there been mismanagement? Or are we, you know, spending, you know, willy-nilly? And there's really not, because we can't be in the same scenario that all these other towns are in, if, if, if that was the situation in, in Westford, if that's what was happening.
It's happening everywhere, but I actually talks about, but it happens everywhere on the towns about the same levels as Westford, right? Like Westford, Acton, Groton, all those places, which were not seeing our deserved share of state aid.
Yeah.
Right? So that's a major system, systemic issue which the state has to fix. So like, they have been taking advantage of those towns for so long.
Yeah.
And then that's not a problem, this committee can fix.
I agree.
I believe that that conversation, though, is, is kind of raising within the MAS C. And there, you know, the, the school committees association that lobbies a lot with the state. And I, I, I know I've, I've reached out to Alicia about that very topic, and she's saying she's hearing that question, coming from a lot of school committees around the state, about what can we do on a statewide level, um, to lobby for more support on, on a statewide?
Yeah, because every time it's not hers, but like, the, the, the average funding gap is increasing for a town like Westford versus other places, right? So like, that cannot continue, because the people living in those towns, they cannot just actually open their pocketbook ever again, because they don't have much money in their pocket.
Sure. I agree with you. Okay, with that said, I'm looking for a motion to approve the FY twenty-five budget of sixty-nine million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you. That is all we have for business tonight, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Oh, who's that?
I'll give that to Bill, just for the sake of continuity. All in favor?